If I should vote you clear, you guys ready?
Sure.
Will you call the audit please? All right, if I should vote you clear, you have the floor. Not necessarily look at you, Brian, or I could look all the way down. Right, who wants to, please, here you go. Larry, may you present the recreation budget.
Sure. Might as well.
I've got a really huge budget.
Yeah.
But I have to start by giving you a revised budget because there's stuff that has come into my attention. The budget that I individually submitted, there was a change, this email, the copy of the new ORYA request, and they are requesting an increase in the amount of money that we pay them from twenty-seven thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars to twenty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars next year. So that is the first change on our budget. The second change, we added tree fertilizer spikes for the new trees at Little River Park, an amount of a hundred dollars because those trees are gonna have to be fertilized along with the irrigation. So those are the only two changes in our budget. Everything else has pretty much stayed the same. The electric has gone up because now we're drip irrigating the new trees. We don't know what exactly that's gonna mount too, so we added a little bit to that over the last year. Easter egg hunt, fishing derby, those are staples of our programs. Model Rocket Day is growing. We had, I think, close to fifty, fifty-some people there this year.
You had a fun trip.
We had a lot, and there'll be more next year because it's, the word's out and everybody I talked to say you're gonna do it again next year. So even seniors wanna come and do it, so, you know, we're getting, we're getting a lot of interest in town, so that's a fun event. Outdoor movie night, that, this is our first year doing that. We learned a few things, and this wasn't what we hoped it would be, but we're gonna try it again next year, and next season, and hopefully so long that, but next year, if it was a better idea, if it's a program, we'll continue it on. So that's a fun day. We don't know what new programs we're gonna bring on board. Our problem is, we have two empty seats, and it's up for the three of us to run with anything more than what we're doing. Excuse me. So we put in the twenty-five hundred dollars there just basically if there is another program, if we feel that we can handle, we would have some funds there for it, necessary. We're also requesting ten thousand dollars to be put through to our trust fund towards tennis court repair. We requested that last year, but it got turned down, so hopefully we get some money put back in there. Tennis court's in rugged shape. It's gonna be about thirty to forty thousand dollars to rebuild that tennis court correctly. We've got some estimates here on that. So if we can start putting money aside for that, that would be better. So basically, that's it. Questions?
I have not a question, or maybe it's a question. I've noticed, I was up to racetrack the other day, and I've been to the park a couple of times, and I've noticed that we're getting several, several kids interested in drones flying around. And I was just wondering if there isn't some way to tie that into maybe some kind of, of, something at the park, drone races.
A drone activity.
Well, actually.
Drone activity.
Yeah.
Drone activities.
Actually, we have discussed that, because I'm into radio control models myself. I do fly down there from time to time.
Yeah.
Again, I need people to help with something like that, you know, it's, I'm all for it. I think that the recommission will look forward to doing that. And that would be basically no cost thing for the town, but it would be an activity that we could, that we could sponsor.
Yeah.
And, no, it's a, it's a great idea, and we have.
Have people bring their own drones.
Yeah, they bring their own drones.
Yeah, they were at the racetrack hovering above the races. I went outside, outside the track, and these, these two boys, I guess they were fourteen years old, somewhere in there. And, man, they had a magnificent drone going, and they just took that sucker up to a hover and started going over the racetrack, showing the races, and doing all kinds of neat things with it. And then we had another young man that submitted something we had in the, we put it in the eCry, was it in the eCry or somewhere, right? And he also then volunteered to say if he wanted me to take pictures or do whatever. So there's, there's several of them out there, and I just thought it would be nice if we could put something together in a form of a club.
And I agree, and it's nice because not just drones, but helicopters and small planes.
Absolutely.
It's all electric today, so it's all quiet, not polluting, you know, some of the old gas models and, you know.
Absolutely.
They're great, they're a lot of fun. The park is a little small for the planes, but it can be handled.
Yeah.
But the drones and helicopters, I think, would be, would be good. We could even do something with cars too. My son's into that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we have the, we have the service out there, the basketball court.
Oh, yeah.
Something could be set up there. But again, I need, I need volunteers, I need, I need two more people on the commission.
Has been advertised on the eCry for some reason.
And I talked to people at the fair, and, you know, everybody's got great ideas, but nobody's got time.
I was wondering if we couldn't get somebody, UNH is giving some drone courses now. I was wondering if maybe you'd get a volunteer out, if we could advertise it somehow. Get a volunteer from one of the students there, whatever, to put together a drone activity of some kind.
We'd look into that.
Got a question, one from Julie on the sheet you handed out here, which was in the front.
Yeah.
You know, it says a thousand dollars for supplies.
That's the porta potty.
That's the porta potty in here? When you look at this sheet, just try to tie it all together.
Thousand dollars, toilet paper, John. Oh, my goodness, it's expensive.
What is it under in the book?
Supplies.
For rec, I mean.
You mean the, what number?
Near the end. Near the end?
Yeah. Some of the commissions.
Yeah.
Oh, the commission, oh, okay.
Yeah, com-coms, amazing commission.
Okay, thanks. I just was not, oh, all right. Up on the link though, I guess.
Change your name.
What's new this year? They always had lots of pieces of paper.
Are you guys gonna sponsor the gentleman that do the basketball at Mastway again?
I'm sorry?
The gentleman at Mastway?
Yeah.
You're gonna sponsor them again, so that's gonna be a little your program.
And that is one of the programs, it's, that's pretty much a self-run thing. They take care of that additional expense, they just, they're just under our wing on that. We do, I know that we're gonna get a request from Karen Rossi for, I think, yoga or something. She talked to me about that briefly tonight, so we'll be looking at that at our next meeting in November.
Did they say why the, why did you say the Oyster River?
You know, I, they sent this, they sent this report, and I was going.
It's in the back of your com-com section, it should be in.
I mean, I'm looking at their financials, and basically they're running about a ninety-five thousand dollar deficit, and they're pouring money from here and there to bring it down to about seventeen thousand, so I'm looking through this thing. We have, I was approached by somebody else, and I'm trying to remember who it is, and I gotta check out the email, that runs a similar program as ORYA, and they wanted to talk to the rec commission, and it would cut our cost to do this. I, I don't know, I'm looking at it, I don't know the mechanics of it, but I have to dig out the email because they do wanna come talk to us.
Was it John Carlton?
No.
Somebody else?
Yeah, I can't remember who it is. They contacted us earlier this year, and we just, we just couldn't arrange to get them to come to a meeting to talk to us about it. We're looking at that, but yeah, the ORYA thing is just increasing here. And I don't know how you guys are gonna handle that, but.
Well, they're coming on the, what date are they coming, the twenty-sixth?
Going backwards, when we're talking about the tennis court, is that the one at Mastway? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's the only one we have, right?
It's, it's in pretty bad shape, and when it gets wet, the little pine pitch on there, it's, it's like walking on grease.
Yeah.
And we've got one corner of it where there's tree root, big pine tree root that's lifting the whole corner of it. It's not regulation size, the fencing is in bad shape. I mean, it just needs a general overhaul. We can either overhaul it to the same size, or just rebuild it to a regulation size. We're gonna have to take out a tree.
That's what I was wondering.
I know that's a dirty word.
Should we take out some trees?
They're, they're just white pines.
Or is there any better spot for it?
Well, we kinda talked about that, and I think that, you know, my opinion is that spot is pretty good, pretty good place for it.
Seems like a good, just make it bigger.
Just, it doesn't have to be a whole lot bigger for regulation size, but, you know, if we do, we would, I think, go on a regulation size would be the way to go. But we'll get more data on that, but we'd just like to get some money put, put aside as we did for everything else towards that. Because it's coming up, it's gonna have to be.
And that's just one tennis court, isn't it?
I'm just wondering if.
They're gonna spend forty thousand dollars if you could spend a little bit more and have two there or something, you know.
No, I, I don't know, we have to be careful. We have to be careful of the property line there with the school and so on, and how much we take away from the field there too.
We'd have to look into all that.
Yeah.
Is it used there?
It is used, yeah, it.
I have never seen anybody.
I know, it's surprising when people use it, it's, I'll be going by, at a weird time, I'll see people out there. But normal times, you know, Saturdays or Sunday, you know, you don't see people there, but it, it does get some use. I think if it's refurbished and, you know, resurfaced and set up correctly, I think we might see more use on it. But we have it, so, you know, what do we do with it? Do we maintain it, do we take it out, do we just let it turn into rubble, I mean, you know, what do we do?
The refurbishment, does that include putting lights on it?
No, that's just new fencing, resurfacing, painting it, new net, that kind of thing.
It doesn't include making it regulation?
Uh, yeah, maybe.
Or does it?
It's, it's, I was surprised at the cost, at the expense, but we had two outfits that specialize in tennis courts come in and take a look at it.
She's a little bit of a, we talked about this last year, and the number that we, people were throwing around was thirty to forty last year, and that was not doing anything. Or had, did you already have it looked at this time?
No, we had it looked at when, when.
This time last year?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if that was a real number, if that was just a number an estimate people had last year.
Well, I'm sorry, not this time last year, earlier this spring.
Oh, okay, somebody was throwing around a number last year of around that size to do the same work.
Yeah, I, I have the proposals, but it's right in that neighborhood, thirty to forty thousand dollars, and all places came in about the same. I know a company that's saying put boards around it and tried to put a tarp under it and put skating pad. What does that do to the integrity of it?
Ice. Well, and top of it, that's not so good for a tennis court.
No, it's, it, when it gets, when it gets damp, it does get very dangerous and very slippery. I mean, probably if we got out there with good pressure washer and cleaned it off, that would help significantly, but still, it's in disrepair. Especially that corner with the roots lifting, like whole corner.
Well, that estimate probably included tearing up the whole thing and.
Yeah, it, it did, I mean.
Drainage and everything, you know, just.
I don't know, I think they were just talking about taking up the blacktop. They would, they would grind up the material that's there and then recycle it, and then bring that back as new, as new hot top or whatever it is that they put down. But we would have to take care of getting a tree out of there, which I think we have the resources to do that. Anything else? Thank you. Joe? Thank you, Coach.
Wow, you're early, Brian.
It's a big, we haven't even had, we haven't approved the minutes that came. At least, the way this is set up, the selectmen get one vote and the committee apparently gets the other vote. So I've read them, I'm in agreement with them, is your motion to accept them on the budget committee side.
So moved.
I think we're all pretty in favor, so it's up to you guys now. Did we have a copy of that?
I'm assuming if he has a copy, that he said the dollar.
He said it to everybody.
Yeah.
It's really the NBC that approves them, you need to assign them.
Yeah.
That's the draft or the other thing, so.
Yeah, I've seen it, so move to accept the minutes of the, what was it, October, what was the date? September or some month?
October fifth.
October fifth, yeah. Grab a second?
And we don't have to.
Well, let's just do it for fun.
Oh, just for fun?
Guys, you guys.
All in favor? There you go, thank you.
Do you wanna?
I'll write a note on it.
Yeah, we need to take the draft off, and then I'll bring it back next. Do you want this back?
Yeah, we'll have to get it back too. And it's fun doing stuff for you. He gets it back once in a while.
Are all the others coming?
I'm not the scheduler, you don't want his indication to me that they weren't gonna, oh, love.
I don't hear anything.
Eric, I think, had a conflict.
Who?
Eric.
Eric's usually early.
So I don't know.
Congress tax blocker was supposed to be here.
Right, but she is not feeling well, so she's not coming in.
And the commission is supposed to be here.
I believe that. You ever called you, Eric?
Yeah, sure, he's coming, he's usually early.
Um, so I guess while we're waiting. So I've heard from Oyster River Youth Association, Stratford Community Action, Homeless Center for Stratford County, Ready Rise, and Child and Family Services, all indicated an interest in coming to the October twenty-sixth meeting. Really? They never called.
Well, we've heard from them for a while, so, and if anything, it's good for the new people to get up to speak on what they are. And some of them changed their names, so you don't know who they are. They combine different ones together, so. Well, in an effort to not waste time, I had a meeting today with a superintendent, and a couple of things that he said. Enrollment is up, the long-range plans that they've used in the past are not holding true. Lab bursts are down, but he's done a little research, and he's come to find out that the town with me is the one that's causing increase in aroma. And he dug into that a little bit more, and his, his initial research is that many of our residents who are older without children are either passing away or moving away, and their houses are being purchased with people with families. And that's what's causing the enrollments to go. This last year, there was a thing in the paper that I was talking to him about in terms of the enrollment of Mastway, which now surpass Mohammed, and Durham and Madbury are the ones that feed Mohammed, and Lee feeds Mastway. So we're the ones that are causing it, so he said, be on the lookout, your tax burden is gonna be going up because we have more kids going into the district, so just be aware of that.
Although we benefit on the other side, so it depends on where those numbers land.
In terms of, you're talking about the state?
Yeah.
Texas.
The state, the state. I also spoke to him about the thing that, when Ross Pollock was here, I spoke to her and said, one of the things that I'm interested in in terms of getting school aid back, because they are looking at it in the middle school, and I spoke to him about that this morning. He's had a conversation with the Durham representatives. They're making no headway because this is more of a Democrat Republican thing. Republicans don't seem to have any interest in terms of putting that program back. So if they are looking for a school, instead of them skate kicking in thirty-five percent, we're gonna be paying for the whole thing just like Newmarket did. So another thing is they're looking at four years from now in terms of that coming. So hopefully, maybe when our representatives come back to speak to us, we can kind of push that particular subject. Because if they are going for a school, it'd be nice if the state could pay for part of them, so let's have them pay for the whole thing, so. Interesting meeting.
I guess so.
Okay, that was my portion of taking out time, so somebody else has to jump in.
Well, did, did anyone have any questions, or has anybody looked at any of the revenue data? Do you know that, do you have a book?
Yeah, that's scary, isn't it? Estimated thirty point eight.
Yeah, and the school, the state, the school number were given to me by the schools, so I'm wondering if, since they gave me those numbers, whether they now think they're gonna go up.
With a nineteen point seven.
In terms of the estimated tax?
Yeah.
I don't know. It depends on when he gave them, when they gave them to you.
It was within the last month.
There's rates going up, okay.
Well, amazing, our county rate actually is going down slightly.
Just a little bit.
I think, I think that's helping in terms of the, the rate is our evaluation went up by, what is it, seventeen? Seventeen? I bet we're going from someplace here, I don't know where it belongs, but, so that's how it's going.
And it's possible that all of the construction in Durham has finally.
Kicked in.
Kicked in in terms of their evaluation, so that changes the distribution somewhat?
Because it's fifty percent valuation, fifty percent deal, and that's all.
Have we run into about a hundred percent valuation, is that correct?
Uh, I think it's more like ninety-six was the last number we got.
I'm sorry, do you want it?
Ninety, I think ninety-six was the last number.
Close.
Yeah.
So we still, we're just waiting for the utility values to set the tax rate?
The water utility value.
Oh, for Penichep or whatever it is.
Well, yes, and then for DRA to complete their review of all the documents that they already have.
Frost advisory for tonight, oh, my goodness.
Probably not here.
Sure.
I don't know, they're saying, that's what mine are saying, frost advisory.
So another thing we spoke about, which I spoke to Karen today, about the committee that I'm on, that are looking at the middle school. They are looking to each of the representative from each town to provide potential locations to a middle school if they move offsite. So one of the things they're looking at is they need three-phase power. So talking to Karen, the chain block on one-twenty-five, because three-phase power is right there from Market Basket, so that's a potential place. Talking to the superintendent, they're not too interested in Athens and South Lake because it's too far from the center of the three towns. She also said there's a particular lot off Route Four next to where Sullivan Tire has their repair place.
Oh, yeah, there used to be a house there, right?
Well, between Oak Mill Road and Sullivan Tire, there's a.
Oh, yeah, there is a place there.
Across from, they have that car starter place with this car up front.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So she said it's kind of wet on the backside, but depending on how much acres they need. With that, there's no three-phase power there, so that's kind of expensive. And she was looking at one other place she was gonna check out, so. But the other thing that MacRae's come up with, MacRae is proposing, if they do move offsite, in back of their public safety facility where LA Rose used to be, and that place is available. And that's like twenty-three acres, so, and that would be more central than any place in Lake. Plus, I was talking to Karen today, it's like, like the Cheney pit, Cheney pit brings in about sixty thousand dollars of tax right there. So if they buy it, there'll be more tax credit for that, so it might be better if somebody else has it, but.
And the Cheney pit is all done through the zoning board, all those house lots.
Yeah, she said it would approve it. Well, this is the plot that's not part of that particular subdivision. So, and she said that subdivision is sold, so they're gonna put in houses, she just mailed them today, so we can't have that. The property inside Route Four is in current use, so you wouldn't even know it's that one.
So if they go ahead and build a brand-new middle school, so what about the old one that they used to sell it?
Well, that's the thing, that what they're looking at is, can they put it on the same site? But then you get into logistics just like really bad in terms of what do you do with the kids?
While you're building, get rid of it.
So that's a problem, but that's something the community needs to look at. But the thing is, if you move offsite, then you don't have to deal with logistics if you have to buy the piece of land. But the thing is, now you're looking at a piece of property that's in the center of Durham. You've got a building that somebody can maybe use. UNH has expressed an interest if they do, because UNH likes to buy everything.
They sure do.
But then you have to look at, well, how much could you sell it for? Are you looking at a million, two million, three, whatever that was to be? Because then that defers the cost of building someplace else, but you do give up that central location. One of the things the superintendent said is, right now they have students that are in the middle school that take classes at high school. So right now they walk, and if the other school is far away, now you have the operational costs of getting them there and getting them back again. So that's something to consider as well. It's been very convenient over the years to have the middle school or high school right there. I would think they would try to do something to keep it where it is. The issue is, how do you renovate, where you put the kids, that, that's one thing. Two, the site is a little bit small, they can kind of squeeze things in, but, you know, there's no growth in terms of, you know, extra space, but it's the fields and stuff, so. Right, that's, you'd have to say you're gonna use the fields at the high school, or have less fields, or whatever, what they build on the fields, and then take that building down and we'll make that the fields. The other thing I asked you about is, are there any property contiguous to that particular parcel that you could acquire? And he says every single parcel is already built on. And he said one of the things if we want, if they wanted to stay there is see if any of those people won't be willing to sell. You could buy their property, get rid of the house, and expand the lot so you have extra space, but. Well, that side is almost condos. It's the other side, yeah. Well, you've got that, you know, the road that comes up off Baghdad, you've got a whole bunch of houses there, potentially you're gonna do. When you get between the high school and the middle school, you've got that whole ravine. I don't know what you could do with that, but you got the houses that are coming up on that road that you drive up to the middle school, coming up Baghdad.
They're talking about replacing it because it's an old plant, or they're talking about replacing it because they need more room, or both?
All, all kinds of, all of those kinds of things. Building is eighty-five years old, the main part of it, they've added on three or four times, I don't remember all the details, but. Three additions and renovations, yeah. But you've got, I believe, three different power plants, because there's, there's one for each one of the. Because there's one for each one of the, and it's kind of old and rundown, so. And they've got a whole list of things they have to deal with, just like arbores, you know, things that they have to fix. There's, when we came last year, they had like a million dollars of deferred maintenance to sell.
Over at maintenance. Sounds better off just build new and let the university buy it and deal with the problems. There's probably asbestos in there or something else probably.
Most likely.
Nineteen, what, thirty-five or something? Something like that, nineteen thirty-something. Because the building, as you look at the front of the building, it's the part on the right-hand side, it's the oldest part.
But was the high school, middle school?
Yeah, they've had years, years of yeah. And the thing is.
I think the middle is the original. I think they built on both ends of it.
No, they built, the right side is the oldest part. Because it, there used to be
They built off.
On the right side, out back is new.
Oh yeah, out the back of that.
Yeah.
But the front.
So it's like the entrance or where they had the entrance.
And that was the, that was the gym.
Yeah, exactly.
And he showed me, if you go in the front door and you take a right, there's like a utility place there. The gym floor is still in that row. You can go and see where the line is. But it used to be where the library is, that was the whole gym.
And that was a side of one of the oldest houses in Durham at one time, a burn, I guess.
Really?
Mr. Paul? Do you want to do Megapal first? He's sustainability. Step right up.
Oh, really?
They're wrong. Nobody was.
We're asking what?
Everybody's very popular tonight, Paul.
Yeah, nobody likes us.
Am I the first person?
No, you're the second.
Second.
Oh, okay.
At the record.
You want me right here? So you have, you have
Yes.
Hard copy.
Yeah, it's within.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So you want me to speak first?
Sure.
Okay, all right. So we, we're new and we've been at it for a little over a year. We started in May of twenty sixteen. So we're still coming to grips with what it is precisely that we'll be doing project-wise and developing a budget. We anticipate we'll have certain needs. So last year we asked for a thousand dollars and for operating expenses and for some outreach. And we're just coming back pretty much and doing the same thing. To date, we haven't expended a cent. however, we have some expenditures that will be coming up shortly. And we are joining with the Ag Commission and the library and co-sponsoring the Backyard Farming Initiative. And at our meeting this past Tuesday night, we voted to offer to the Ag Commission. The Ag Commission pays for the overhead for the Grange Hall, which is where the Backyard Farming Initiative meets, and also for the videotaping. So our committee on Tuesday night voted to offer to assist them in covering some of those costs. So that will be an expense. And also at our meeting on Tuesday, you may or may not be aware that we are using the logo that, from the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary, is kind of an identifying logo for our group. And we are going to offer an honorarium to Amy Daskel for use of that. So those two things are happening. We anticipate that our largest project is just going to be rolled out and it's a, it's a water awareness project. And it was prompted by the recent drought, which appeared to go away, but really hasn't gone away. And what we're trying to do is develop a packet that would be available voluntarily to residents in Lee to learn about their own water system and to develop a record for their own personal use in terms of their water habits and their locations and service records and such. The document is sixteen pages long. And so far, we've been doing in-house printing. And I've been covering some of the smaller costs myself and Julie's office helps us with other printing costs. But with the document at large, we're probably going to distribute that electronically, which is a lot of what we're going to do. But we're going to also have some hard copies. So I, I think we anticipate maybe either within the next year or sometime shortly thereafter, that we'll be probably producing some more formal type of document or flyer. And I'm on, I also sit on the Agricultural Commission and we've developed three brochures about farms in food in Lee. And I did the artwork for all three of those. I, I think for sustainability, we don't anticipate something that large, but we anticipate something that, hard copy-wise, will be out there. So I'm talking more about what it is we're doing because I think that's germane to, 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 to the thinking in terms of what our financial needs might be. We've been working on composting and the history of composting in Lee in an effort to try to, well, first of all, try to learn more about what the history has been, but also to try to assess how many folks, residences are engaging. And the ultimate goal is to reduce the cabbage feed. We anticipate a large part of the weight at the transfer station going out as food waste. So that's a project we're working on. We are in the early stages of a mentorship program where people who have certain skills in Lee voluntarily will make themselves available to share their skill set with others. When we develop these programs, I, I think that a lot of them will be mounted on websites and digitally, so. If there are costs to that, those costs are costs that we've yet to discover, although in, in Julie's ear. But I think that it, it's challenging to, to mount newer things on, on our current town web structure. And that's certainly a way we would want to do it. And maybe it has something to do with the, the amount of money we spend for the service we get. And I'm not sure, but I, I think there might be tiers of, tiers of interactivity that we could buy up and we could be a bit more robust. And I may or may not be correct in saying that. But, so we're trying to navigate through that and, and do something a little bit more robust than, than, than clicking on the current layout. I'm not being critical of the current layout, but I'm just saying that, that, you know, if you scroll down committees and commissions, you click and then you go and then, you know, you see, and there's a limit to, to the number of things you could put there. It's, it's pretty straightforward. It's, it's, you know.
There, you have three items on your webpage right now? You could have a lot more than that.
And we're headed in that direction now, so.
Okay, I'm just, right, they're not maxed out right now?
Oh, I'm not suggesting we're maxed out. I, I think that we, we want to do video and the like and so we'll see where that is going to go with it. But at any rate, operations and clerical, a hundred dollars. And somewhere along the way, I, I guess if, if, if the printing is happening in-house, then, then somebody else is covering that cost. I'm not sure whose line item picks that up, but, but we're not picking it up directly and maybe we should be. Maybe it should be allocated to, 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 to the committee. And I don't exactly know how that plays out. But right now, we're, you know, we're, the town hall's doing some of it. I'm doing some of it out of my pocket simply it's easier for me to do it that way. Sometimes I, you know, I'm not doing it in a timely manner for Denise and I don't want to impose on her. We anticipate nine hundred dollars for outreach and program development and five fifty for maybe a brochure and printing and mailing cost. But again, since, since we wrote this and we, on Tuesday night, we voted to offer to cover five hundred dollars of the Backyard Farming Initiative. Grange cost, which is, I think, a hundred and twenty-five dollars a session, there are five sessions. And then the video cost is about eleven hundred dollars. So we're, we're offering to cover part of that. Two hundred dollars for community programs and speakers. We haven't done anything with that yet. We are also just partnering as of today with, with the Energy Committee, but that's not costing us anything to do that. Maybe a hundred and fifty dollars for conferences or membership dues if we hitch up with anybody along the way. We don't have a clear vision on that. So it's difficult to sit here and talk to you because we're so new and we don't have a track record and we're really kind of looking to figure out what our baseline will be. So rather than come in and say, we don't need any money, or come in and say, well, you know, we need this amount. We figured that a thousand dollars is modest. And between now and the time everything is set in January budget-wise, I think we'll have a clearer picture of how the first seven months of this fiscal year are playing out for us. So I'll be glad to answer questions.
Well, it's kind of hard to plan anything if you don't know what kind of resources you have to use, doesn't it? I mean, it's, it's a catch, catch twenty-two. Without money, you're, you're hard pressed to say, well, we could do this, we could do that. And yet coming up with a sum of money. I mean, what, what do you think you would, you would need? Or what would you like to have as an annual budget to work off of to start? Is there a number that, that's in your mind or?
I'm anticipating that, that will be here for the long haul. You know, the committee will, you know, bases will change, but the committee will continue to exist. And I'm also anticipating that, that we and other committees and commissions will, ones that relate to each other, will find some projects and some things together. So I, I think it's going to take three, three years to figure out what those lines are. You know, the only thing I have to draw on is when I was teaching at Oyster River and I was part of that budget process for, for programs that I was intimately involved with. And also I can draw upon what happened with the Oyster River Sustainability Committee and I had chaired that committee at its inception. And we were more robust. I mean, we went in after we became a committee. We went in and simply sought, was it fifteen, twenty thousand dollars for very specific things, program-wise, and then went on the boards. What happened ultimately, let's take the food service, which through a war party on the district budget, secured ten thousand dollars to buy local product. That became a line item. So that just kind of drifted, that, that, so that just kind of drifted over into, into becoming a permanent line item. And they're kind of self-sufficient. They're supposed to support themselves and then get additional support at the end of the year. Direct answer to your question. Unlike the Ag Commission, and again, I'm a member of that commission, the Ag Commission, we do the harvest dinner. And the harvest dinner actually generates, it generates a profit. And then the Ag, as commission is able to roll those dollars over. This committee won't be able to do that. So, so we're not going to have any profit-making ventures like that. We, we see ourselves as an outreach committee with sustainability and resilience as the focus. So I, I don't think, I don't see it exceeding two thousand dollars anytime soon. The Ag brochure that, that I've been part of costs about a thousand dollars to print. You know, we don't, there isn't an artwork cost because I'm doing that artwork. So that's for a thousand copies. So it ends up being around ninety cents a copy for that type of thing. If we do something large, and we've been through two fifty, if we printed postcards and stuff, that's about seven hundred fifty or eight hundred dollars to do stuff like that. I, I think we want to do it electronically and I think we want to have facilities where we can have people gather maybe over food and over speakers and common purpose. So it's going to be really, really modest. I don't see, you know, if some sort of grant came up and we had a, you know, laid on matching dollars, I guess we would come to you, you know, for that type of thing. And that's a possibility that I could think of. So, I guess it is. There it is. And, and you know, so we'll, we'll have this water thing that we're going to, to roll out. Hopefully, select board will, will like it enough that will go with it. I think a similar thing will happen with compost and, you know, this, this mentorship thing that, that we're talking about, if it gets going, it, it won't have much of an overhead as long as we're using time building and stuff like that, so.
Paul, can you clarify, you're just asking for a thousand dollars? Because in this particular line item, there's nothing for outreach and program development and you mentioned that.
No, outreach and program development is the main category and all those items underneath are under that.
Oh, okay.
I don't, I don't know if I laid it out correctly, but.
So that's the nine hundred dollars you were talking about? Okay.
That's the nine hundred.
Now that makes sense.
It's like a subcategory of the other. But if, if you took that program development and outreach thing, it probably would break out that way. But already, we're headed in the direction of, if we're going to help support the Backyard Farming Initiative, that's not exactly a brochure or a flyer. So I'm not sure how, how stable the, the line items are, but, you know, we'd be expending within the broader category that we might be doing a flyer.
Very nice.
So, sorry to confuse you. Any other questions?
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Paul.
Yeah, as this goes along, we'll keep you updated. Well, and I'm sure Julie will be aware, John will be aware, what, what our requests are. I'm sure requests are. So, thanks.
Thank you.
So we're going to reschedule Tom Clark.
And you didn't get a signature from the Ag Commission? I didn't see one. I understand you're asking for money.
Verbally, a thousand dollars. Verbally.
Yeah, you wanted basically the same amount that you had last year.
Well, he, he.
Well, but then they didn't get anything last year. So that was.
They didn't ask for anything last year.
Right, but it was a confusing request. But ultimately, they're asking for a thousand dollars.
Okay. Do we have, I, I haven't seen it, but maybe I'm not looking hard enough. The amounts that are left in all of their.
Yes, if you go to the COMCOM section, it's the first page.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Current values. So the Ag Commission has a pretty good current values.
Yeah.
The Energy Committee, who evidently isn't coming to that, are they the ones who are doing the project on the swap shop?
Yes.
Well, no.
It's a no.
They started.
They started. Their idea, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But it's not going through their budget?
Yes. Five thousand dollars of the cost is coming out of the operating budget for the Energy Committee.
Okay, because it's not in their budget.
They're willing.
Fifteen hundred. There's, energy is. Fifteen hundred, there's, energy is.
It's coming out of this year's budget.
Of this year's?
Yes, they have ninety-nine hundred dollars this year.
Okay, then it was in there, okay, I was trying to remember if it was, if, if that was in their budget and.
Yeah, if you.
So they'll be taking care of.
Well, because the Sustainability Committee and the Energy Committee are in the government building.
Because they're not, their page isn't in here either. Like the commissions, you have the page from the.
There's a blue page for energy and a blue, and it's on.
Yes, but I meant there's not, there's not, you have a, um, one of these pages for the commissions, but the.
Yeah, it's in the, um, it's in the, it's in the government building section. I'll make a note next year to.
Okay, because they had ninety-two hundred dollars for energy improvements and seven hundred dollars for their, like, expenses.
Okay, so that project is in this year's budget?
Correct.
And there's nothing that goes over into next year's budget right now, okay.
They were going to possibly go to the CIP this year to talk about capital projects that they're gonna recommend and what dollar amounts they might assign to those. And I recommended that they contact Karen Rossi to get on the CIP schedule, but I don't know whether they did that.
Can you, last guy, you spoke of the Agriculture Commission, who are, are the so far. How much did that cost them?
At the fair?
At the fair.
Uh, no, I don't know.
I don't know how much. You'll, you'll hear from the fair people that come.
Should I go back into the.
No. The Ag, the three commissions have revolving funds that are statutorily determined. They get to make money and they get to spend money without having to come to the Select Board.
We find out, the Conservation Commission says that it has over nineteen thousand. Is some of that part of the David Allen?
I don't know. If it is, there's not a whole lot in that David Allen fund, I don't think.
Well, I'm just, if they got nineteen thousand dollars, I'm not that inclined to give another five thousand.
There we go.
And the Ag Commission, they've got over eight thousand. Why do I need to give another thousand dollars? Heritage didn't ask for any more money because they got tons.
Right.
Rec Commission has thirty-eight hundred, that's not tons.
That's actually paying for the trees, right?
Well, that didn't come out of the revolving fund.
This is a revolving.
Oh, it's the third one, that was the CIP.
That was a Warren article.
Those are Warren articles, okay.
Well, a Warren article and then they had money left over in their operating budget, about seven thousand dollars. And so they, um, used that.
And they had a five hundred dollar gift certificate.
Right. The purpose of the Recreation Revolving Fund is to pay for programs.
Well, if they keep asking for operating money to pay for programs, then what do they use the thirty-eight hundred dollars for?
They don't.
That's a good question, isn't it?
Frequently use the revolving fund.
Can.
But they understand that it's there.
Well, they get an accounting of it every month.
Can, um, we ask that Joanne give us some detail in terms of the Rec Commission's revolving fund? Like, what have they spent in the last year or two? The same thing with the Agriculture Commission and also if she can check to see if the Conservation Commission had nineteen thousand. How much of it is the David Allen fund?
And I will be happy to provide all this information, but I just, again, the commissions have full authority to spend their money, but I understand you're looking at it from the operating side, that if they have this money.
We don't.
Why, we need to give them more.
Right.
That's my, that is my point.
Yep.
Just like when we came up, what, two years ago, we said, "How much money do you have?" And Heritage hasn't asked for anything for two years because they got tons of money sitting there, so why keep giving them? And I'm thinking the same thing might be true for the other ones, but I don't know that for sure, so.
Or do they have something big planned that's coming up that they're gonna spend a good portion of that money or something?
The Recreation Committee could be trying to build a fund or fix the tennis court.
It's not for capital projects.
We have another fund.
They have a separate fund.
Separate trust fund for that, right? Which is where the trees came from, right?
Well, let's get the data and then if we need to ask all the questions, we can ask them to see if they can.
Do we know why Eric wanted a thousand dollars this year?
No.
Sounds good.
Eric always.
Probably just to add something.
Well, didn't he, doesn't he continue to put out a brochure?
Yep.
What is it that, last year?
I think they update it every year, it's very nice.
They do a wonderful job, money's gotta come somewhere. But they do have the eight thousand, so.
So who are we missing? Energy? They do the farmers market and everything too, right? I mean, that's part of where they're.
They sponsor.
No, it's now Tina.
Tina's on.
Is the market master.
The market master.
Problem with the farmers market, they're probably not gonna be sustainable. Before, I was talking to a couple of people who sell there that, you know, now Market Basket, other stores aren't selling products, being bought by the local farmers. So people are going just to Market Basket to get the corn and products they normally would got from the Lee's Farmer Market.
I know, but.
I know, I don't know.
It's not, it's not.
You can't tell for sure.
The stores are doing that, it is not well identified.
Yeah.
I stopped going to the Whoopi pie when you stopped selling.
Well.
Just had enough and didn't come back this year, so.
Pastry and all that.
Yep, those are wicked good.
The only place that I know that did identify was like Durham Market.
Yes.
Had a separate spot. When, when. Gressi owned it. Now, I don't know.
I don't know about that. Hillary's different.
I haven't even been in there for a while.
Well, I will check with Linda and Eric and.
Sharon, was the Energy on there?
Yeah, Energy was.
Energy, yep, I was gonna talk to, um, Thor, but.
Oh, Thor has.
Nothing to do with that. I'll contact those three and see if we can find another time for them to come in. Maybe on the twenty-sixth, I don't know, let's see.
Let's say the call meeting was scheduled, is there a further discussion? Not on the budget, not on the, obtain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
For the selectmen's sticks are on.
So, does this replace your Monday meetings?
No.
Okay, so you still meet on Monday, but then you have another meeting, like.
Oh, my planning board, which is going on now, so I can't be in two places at the same time, I gotta make a choice, yeah.
So the meeting that we got the agenda for that you're gonna have now is a public meeting and not a.
Yes.
It's a public.
I thought you guys decided that you were going to be the new facilities meeting.
No.
No.
Okay, and I'm interested in the minutes.
This is, we're gonna be talking about the charge for the.
Second.
Do you see?
I, we love an audience.
You wanna stick around?
So I, I guess I was a little confused because I got, I get the email on the, on the selectman, um, minutes and notes and everything. So there was one that just came and all it had was basically last week's.
Budget discussion, is that the one? And then it said discussion about the facilities.
So there'll be another one for the selectmen's meeting?
Yeah.
For Monday.
Monday, Monday.
Because I, I get them regular, I get them in a week and I.
Why do you think you're in this committee? We're trying to suck you in to get involved in all the other two. You're just on the grown, former committees, right?
That's what I'm looking. But, uh, yeah, that's why I was confused. I'm like, oh, maybe they just do this when they have a budget. Maybe they just don't have their Monday meeting.
And I'll tell you why they might.
They're gonna be two to meet now.
Do you wanna come? Are you staying or you don't have to?
I might stay. Facilities is talking about the new buildings.
Now, I rewrote this, I took along with Scott Hat and, um, actually, I don't know where you got it from, but you got a testament from somewhere else, maybe you wrote the first one. And then I took some of your stuff and then I made some modifications. And, um, I'm recommending it's called a campaign committee because that's really what it is. It's a, it's a committee to campaign for our vision. So I said the Select Board has tasked the newly established Campaign Committee to develop an implemented strategy to disseminate the vision of the Board of Selectmen, because we are the controllers, not the Facility Committee. It rests with us, we have the authority at this point. And addressing the facility innovation and renovation and modernization of the town center buildings over a multiple-year period. So it really establishes what we're trying to do, refurbish or build over multi-years. Strategy will strive to educate citizenry on the current physical conditions of these aging buildings and their need to be renovated, modernized and/or reconstructed. Campaign Committee will serve in advisory capacity to the Select Board, but because of the breadth of the audience that needs to be reached, it will work with the Boards, Commissions and Committees as well as the Town Staff to develop and execute the strategy. I just, that's basically yours with a couple of changes. Campaign Committee will consist of, in fact, that's all the saying, five members, including one member of the Board of Selectmen, but no more than ten members, members who are appointed by the Select Board and as a term later. Preparation for the 2019 Deliberative Session. Campaign Committee will develop plans to publicize vision of the Select Board by gauging the town and Lee community via print, public meeting and/or any other appropriate method. Campaign Committee will ensure that the following points are addressed. Current status of the town center buildings, including COVID and specifically ADA issues. Details of strategy include the optional site of the newly constructed Town Hall and Stevens Field. If the purchase of the Lee Church Congregational property can't be purchased. And its location move in old town buildings. Issue the strategy addresses and those that don't work. Desired outcomes of the strategy and consequences of not addressing the identified in a timely fashion. Financial details of strategy at this stage and possible funding sources. And then, you know, I listed all those dates, which I'm sure, you know, I need to course check those dates at this point.
Should.
Julie will probably be checking. November twenty-seventeen, February twenty, I mean, February twenty-eighteen, campaign to the public. February third, Deliberative Session, presentation of voters about the campaign strategy and a Warren article requests funds to prepare preliminary drawings and create a RFP to contract to develop the total cost of the multi-year strategy. February third to March thirteenth, continue to provide information to the public. March thirteenth, Lee decides the future of the strategy. And then March twentieth to January twenty-nineteenth, the Warren article passes work with an architectural firm and contracts to create preliminary drawings, a model and cost for the strategy, source of the funding, bonding, on the site fund balance, et cetera, as well as grants to be explored. I made these modifications in the fact that I wanted to make sure that everybody in the stands, the Board of Selectmen is the authority in this thing and we are, and the, what will be this committee is completely advisory to the Board. The other aspect of it, you had listed on here, you know, the different buildings. You know, I think you said Town Hall, Library, Heritage Building or History. We don't really control what goes on with the, you know, Historical Society.
You maintain the building.
Well, it's, but don't forget they're a separate enterprise and so I kind of left that open and specifically say that because that's a bit of point of issue.
Well, the other thing is, at some point, we should clarify in terms of who owns it. Supposedly it was donated to the Historical Society, but it sits on town and we land and we maintain it.
Is there any documentation?
They have something that the gentleman who owned it when it was in Epping.
Yeah.
Offered, they have a letter that says, "We're, I'm offering this to you, will you accept it?" And they say, "Accept it," so.
We should probably have a copy of that.
I don't, I don't have it.
No, 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 I mean, we should get it from the Historical Society.
So that there's a kind of a graking area. We maintain it, it's on our property, but we don't own it.
Well, we might have it.
Well, I.
This is interesting.
But, but the issue that was, as I read it and I thought about it, and being a member of the society since nineteen eighty, I, I'm not sure, even though the plan, the drawing that was laid out the other day said the Historical Society was gonna take control of Town Hall, I'm not sure I'm enthusiastic about that whatsoever. My visions of Town, Old Town Hall is totally different than a museum.
Well, I, I don't think they want to take it over, they just want to use the space to display some other stuff.
I'm hoping that's exactly what it is. Because I was hoping it would be, please go ahead.
Well, if you read the minutes, that, they, i- i- if you read the minutes, you definitely come away with the impression that the building would then be theirs. And that they would let, I'm just saying, if you read the minutes, that's what's reflected in the minutes.
And whose minutes, the facility?
Facility's committee.
You know, I, I don't think that's true. I, I, I'm not saying that.
And what does that mean, maybe the tenants?
I think they would just use it.
Well, what, what threw me was when they, when, according to the minutes, now, you know, that they would let other groups use the building for meetings. That's the part that suggested to me that the Historical Society perhaps believes that they're in control of, they would be in control of the old Town Hall or the existing Town Hall, I should say.
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
That, that was. It's my, it's my impression, the, the way the relationship would work, and this is my impression, that, um, they have control over their popo, uh, not popo, it's the freight depot. And then they would use the bottom floor of Town Hall to display stuff. Possibly use what the town clerk tax collector's area is there for, like a place to work, like an office, a meeting room, whatever like that. And the second floor, they could store their stuff. But other groups could use the downstairs, the meeting room, because their stuff would just be around the outside, that's it. So, that's.
Well, that certainly sounds like the building, i- if not in terms of ownership, belongs to them by virtue of they're using every square foot of the building.
They're using it, but not necessarily owning it.
Because there were also discussions that the existing town clerk tax collector's space would be used by the commissions as office space, so that they're no longer on the second floor.
So it's a shared area. But that's something we can explore.
Yeah, well, that's why I've kind of left it a little open up here. I don't want it to look, the, the, the way you read, said it in your, your particular paragraph is we're just gonna employ the Facilities Committee's recommended agents. Well, some of them we're gonna take, others we're gonna reject.
The to be that you get here, I think maybe I wasn't, I wasn't conveying my thoughts because you're talking about the, what the issues, the strategy addresses and those it doesn't. My comment was in terms of what the plan that the Facilities Committee created addresses and doesn't, not necessarily the strategy to implement that particular plan, that's, that's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, I, I just, I didn't understand that.
Because the plan addresses certain things and it's certain things it doesn't. So that's what I wanted to make sure when they publicize these things, so that people know, okay, well, the plan that we're proposing does these things, but it doesn't do these things. And that's what I'm trying to get at, or that's what I was trying to convey.
Yeah.
Because when you say issues, the strategy addresses, well, it's not the strategy, it's the plan that we are pushing forward or promoting.
So how would you want to reword that?
I think just go back in terms of the, the, I don't know what terms you used earlier, but in terms of the, the thing that we're trying to promote there.
Well, the one, the strategy is the overall vision. The strategy is how do we promote the overall vision? And of course, the, the actual committee themselves, they have a plan to develop to do that.
Yeah, so it's really what, what things the plan addresses and what the plan doesn't address. That's what.
Yeah, so you're gonna have a verbiage on that. Do you see where we're going?
Oh, I understand what you're saying because up above you were referring to what they are doing as a strategy.
That's right, that is their strategizing, yeah.
Right, as opposed to.
The actual plot plan.
Yeah, right. Right.
So maybe that's, you know, I know what you're trying to say. One, it actually will take care of and things it will not take care of. Because involved in this is no issues associated with highway departments building. They're not involved in this thing. Public safety is not anymore to the road here or the transfer station. Really is just the core town center, if you want to still call it a town center. It's just that little ring of buildings around the, you know, the, the parking lot at this point.
The other thing I have, and this was Monday night after you, we all talked about this. So, um, the Town Center Public Information Committee, I, I don't necessarily like the word campaign.
Don't you?
Because I, I'm envisioning this as an education.
They're carrying a flag, man.
Campaign denotes, let me make you think the way I want to in particular, I don't necessarily want them to.
That's what our vision is.
No, that's not my vision.
I want them to think our vision.
I want them to be educated on what the particular issues are and let them make their own decision. Campaign, I think, it, it has. Campaign, I think, it has negative connotations, at least for me, that we're trying to somehow, not necessarily brainwash them, but make them all think the way we want them to think, and I just want to present all the information to them and let them make their own decision. I think they'll come to the same decision, but I don't necessarily like that particular word.
I wasn't too interested in that title. Go ahead.
Hey, it's 10 o'clock at night.
We're at each other's throat, you think you can get in here. Oh, man. You did a wonderful job.
Oh, she's wonderful.
What about if you called it an education campaign? Well, then they would think it has to do with education.
Yeah, the thing we're trying to sell in middle school, let's watch that.
So I'm not sure, I struggled with this particular thing.
I'm sure you did.
At 10:30, 11 o'clock, that's the best I had, and I sent an email to Julie and said, "This might not be the best name, but this is what we got." But that's what I'm trying to convey, a group that's going to educate and let them know this information, disseminate this information. I like the word disseminate in terms of, this is all the stuff we know, take it in, and then you determine what you think in terms of needs to be done.
But, you know, like anything else, is that the Board of Selectmen has to lead with vision. We have to, it's like anything else, when the CIP always come to us, tell us what your thoughts are with respect to the budget. Or, the Department heads had asked us, you know, are we flatlining budgets? And they had asked us to make a decision what our vision was.
Well, call it the Town Center Vision Committee, that, something like that maybe. That's not a good acronym, but...
Yeah, I'm trying to think of what's a good acronym.
I don't know, I spent time doing that.
I thought about that, too. Look at Campaign Committee Charge, CQ.
CQ. What if you're in McLean County, you're going to walk that out completely.
Also, also looks like CCC, looks like the Russian Federal Government, so I got to get that, too.
Yes, if we call it the Campaign Committee Charge Program, that would be...
Yeah, oh, gosh.
Any words of wisdom from you three that are kind of...
Yeah, you said big fire over there.
I didn't know if we were supposed to chime in or not.
If I didn't know what you were doing, and I saw Campaign Committee Charge, I would think you were going to try to control how campaigning is going on.
Well, I would not think it had anything to do with the future building process. What do we need to call it?
Proposed Town Center Vision.
I might not read that. I might give it up quickly.
You know? Proposed Town Center, you know, vision. Proposed vision of our town center, whatever, however you want to, you know.
Is this the committee whose job it is to get something on the warrant?
You guys are proposing, this is what you're proposing, and it's not necessarily what exactly you're going to have.
Because we have a plan for the Facilities Committee, and we need a committee to promote that particular, disseminating the information to the voters, so they can, one, make an educated determination, is this something that they, as a towns person, would support? Are they not going to support it? And it's not like we want to brainwash everybody, think this way, think this way, it's more like, here's the information, you determine what you think needs to be done. So what is, telling what the conditions of the building, making them aware of what the plan does, what the plan doesn't, potential costs and things like that. And that's what we need the committee to do, to go out and educate those particular people or let them know that information.
So we're trying to determine the name of the committee.
I think your write-up is excellent. I don't have a problem at all with the write-up. It's just you've got to get someone to read the write-up based on the title, and this title is...
Yeah, well, I know, it's like you read an abstract, after that, if you don't, forget the rest of it, if you're not interested, yeah.
I mean, it's like going through the newspaper, the headline doesn't catch my interest.
And the latest research says...
I think we've got to say what it is, it's a proposal for the vision of the Town Center.
Well, that's what this is, it's a proposal, but we need to name the, the Facilities Committee does not exist anymore.
I understand.
It's been sunsetted, so they're just a group of individuals waiting to be established at this point, so we're trying to name it so we can establish...
But we are talking about the Town Center Vision Committee.
We are talking about the Town Vision, are we not?
Yes, we are.
For the Town Center Committee, exactly.
Town Vision Committee.
Town Center Vision Committee, or something like that, yeah.
Just, just TCVC?
Town Vision.
TCVC?
We've got to make the...
That sounds like something you get in the jungle. Would depend on why I got TCVC.
Well, he's got, there's the latest research now that the average student has an eight-second attention span, so if you don't grab an eight seconds, you're going to lose them. So it's got to be something short and sweet, because if it takes too long to read it, you're going to lose it.
Is that college level where you're at, or middle school?
No, this, it's grammar school level.
What is it?
Grammar school.
Oh, grammar school. I was going to say, you have eight seconds for your students, you're in trouble.
Well, we know if we propose like a shooting range in Little River Park, people get all excited about that, so maybe you should put down, propose a shooting range in Little River Park, and then they'll read it.
Ah, there you go, I could take that. Shotgun. Put up two stations up there, we can shoot skeet.
I can go with the TCVC.
TC what?
Town Center Vision Committee.
Just the Town Vision, I don't know if just the Town Vision Committee.
Let them start, take the stuff out there and see what they, what they can do.
We have nine people there.
But it is the Town Center, it's not just the whole town. Town Vision is more like the, you know, planning for discussions when they were putting together the master plan. It's like a vision for the whole town, whereas this is more narrow.
Where it is right now, it is the whole town, we keep calling it the Town Center, so, I mean, I think there's a lot of people in town that are interested in developing some kind of a centralized town center. I think a lot of people have that interest. You've just got to get them to read what you've written, and that's, or want to read, that's the only thing I'm trying to say.
I think there's a lot of interest, but I wouldn't, looking at that title, I didn't know anything to do with the town center.
The nine people that were interested in terms of asking to be on that committee are the ones who are going to read it. Townspeople won't necessarily see that, they'll all see it on the website, but that's really for the people on the committee, so they know what their charge is.
I think a lot of people are...
But when they do look at it, if they see Town Center Vision Committee, they're going to know...
I think Town Center Vision Committee works.
I do, too. Town Center Vision Committee.
Yeah.
Make a motion.
Make your motion.
I make a motion to name it Town Center Vision Committee.
Second.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done? So every place you see Campaign Committee with Town Center Vision Committee.
I mean, it starts, it says it, second sentence, right?
The vision of the Board.
So it's there. You get the start, I don't want any more papers.
So we'll make the changes on that, and I will, since I wrote this part, I will make that change, send it to Julie. Then Julie can disseminate that, because we're going to vote on it. Now, that other area, if you had spoken to the two Bs, Scott, you want to work that a little bit better?
Well, whatever you called the plan, see, you're talking about developing a plan, so if you just change that third word from strategy to plan, it goes back to where it was before.
What do you mean, I'm missing a point?
Issues the plan addresses and those that it doesn't, as opposed to issues the strategy addresses.
So if you change it back to what it was before...
Issues the...
The plan.
The plan addresses.
Yep.
And knows that it doesn't.
Because I want them to disseminate what the Facilities Committee has for a plan, but what that plan does for people and what a plan doesn't do for people, there's a list.
Can we put it on the ad, like, can we call it a site plan?
Well, it's not necessarily a site plan, but there's programmatic things in there as well. There's certain things that we came up programmatically that the plan is not going to address. There's a, there's a slide in the presentation that covers what it covers, what it plan does and what it doesn't, so I want people to know what those particular things are.
But then, but then we go on to say, and consequences of addressing the identified issues, what identified issues are we talking about? The ones that it doesn't address?
Yeah, in terms of the, the plan itself, so, yeah. So really, and see, the outcomes of the plan.
Give me an example of what it's not addressing that it should. Because if there's a bunch of stuff it's not addressing but it should, we should go back and fix the plan, shouldn't we? I mean...
Well, this is preliminary.
Yeah, so, I don't know that off the top of my head, I didn't bring that, but it's in the presentation, this whole slide, it covers what it...
What it doesn't do?
Yes. And there's like four or five things in there, and I don't remember what they have off the top of my head.
It's, another thing, it seems to be that before, or in conjunction with the Board determining charge for this new committee, the Board, I don't think, has voted to accept...
The plan.
The plan, lock, stock, and barrel.
I think you're absolutely right.
And my opinion is that the Board ought to have a pretty healthy discussion about that plan.
In fact, we had, just started it tonight about this miscue with respect to what these, you know, not the Heritage Commission, but the Historical Society, what they think their part of this is or not. And my vision of that building was that it would still be a meeting hall for people to meet, and Boards, Commissions, and everybody else, or even if the library wanted to take it over temporarily as a community setup for people to sit and knit and sew, and have discussions and meetings, even though we do some of that here with respect to presentations.
Yep.
It'll be, because we want to renovate that building and fix the foundation and make it continue to be useful.
Yep.
So I want to make, well, all that has to be somewhere tightened up a little bit.
Well, I think, I think, I think Julie's right, and that's, that was, you know, I The fact is, if there's some things in the plan that are, if you would, questionable or open-ended, or whatever word you want to use, and we really have not sat down and gone bullet-by-bullet through the plan, and, and asked ourselves questions about, is that, is that the way we feel about it, or, you know? We, we need to know what we're talking about before we go forward with the plan, I'm not sure we've digested the plan enough to do that.
And not to bring up a sore subject, but as you know, the Town Staff has some questions about the size of the proposed Town Hall.
Yes.
The things that I'm alluding to in terms of what the plan covers and what it doesn't, doesn't include operating costs, ongoing operating costs, that should be the operating budget. Excludes, excludes the cost of moving staff and offices, so the plan doesn't cover that.
Of what?
Moving, okay. Staff costs, that, excludes new furnishings, there's no money in there for new furnishings, so that's going to be aware of. And the renovation of the current Town Hall costs are based on preliminary walkthrough, so that's just based on what we've seen. So if we get into there and we find...
That could be a big one.
Indian burial grounds underneath, you know, that's kind of going to be problematic, so... But I think that's something that the people need to be aware of, that it doesn't cover those particular things, so...
Well, that, right now, they obviously can ask a whole bunch of questions, we don't have answers for, so it looks to me like we need to go in and plug some of those holes.
I'm trying to look at this to find out what we could...
I would hope if we have...
Cut out some of the details in this thing and leave a little bit open, they can at least start moving. I mean, the thoughts are, we're looking at the fact that we're thinking about a new Town Hall and what is church property, but it's not going to go there, it could go over here, and the buildings will have to be renovated over a multi-year plan, without getting too much detail. I mean, that at least charged the committee at that point, we get a little bit more specific later on.
Well, I think, one of the things we just brought up in terms of multi-year plan, what do you mean by that?
Well, there's no way we're going to, if my vision is going to take multi-years to do this, it's not going to be done all at once. Not going to do Town Hall renovating, library, and everything all at once, because it takes time to move from one building to the next. Got to move out of this old Town Hall, reconstruct this and move in there, then library will have to move out into Town Hall or something else, while they get added on or renovated. It's a multi-year project.
Are you envisioning one project that covers multiple years? So we're going to propose it as one thing, but it's going to take multiple years to accomplish.
Yeah, it wasn't my vision, but that's the way it's coming.
Okay, okay.
You saw the discussion out of the other night.
All right, so I'm okay with that.
Okay, that's, it's a multi-year project, but...
One project, but spread over multiple.
I would hope any RFP that you put out, though, also indicates that whoever designs it has to design it with further expansion and a future in mind. Because I don't think that was done when this building was built.
Well, we did the upstairs, that was the only expansive part of it. But, yeah, in terms of the, the Town Hall location, there's room to go this way, towards the back.
But I mean, the actual plant itself, because how would you add on to this building? There really isn't an easy way to add on to this building.
This one, not particularly.
So, you need to, because I think Julie said, when she said that some concerns by staff, there's not enough room. You're definitely going to have to make sure that this town grows some, and as the activity of the municipal government grows, there is a way to grow the Town Hall without having to tear it down and build a different building or whatever. And that should always, I think, be in the plan when you put any building up, because the rule of thumb usually is 50 years. You look far, too.
Well, there's, there's room for the Town Hall to move, expand, but also room for the library to expand if it needs to.
Guys, what are we going to do? What I want to do is, I wasn't necessarily talking about the room expanded, I'm talking about, I think if we just take out this middle section here, we could save it.
How easier than not.
This section.
Everything, you mean one and two?
Yeah, no, we'll keep, I'd like to be able to keep paragraphs, the top one, the next one that says, no longer, whatever this Campaign Committee will replace with the other one, then the third paragraph, and the fourth paragraph, keep all that, because there's nothing in there that's tying you directly to a specific plan.
Yep.
It's very open. Then the, the Town Center Vision Committee will ensure that the following points are addressed, the current state of the Town Center buildings, including code and specifically ADA issues, that's very important, they kind of know that, so they can talk about those issues. And describe the strategy, including the optional site of a newly constructed Town Hall in Stevensfield, if the purchase of Lead Church congregation property can't be purchased.
I would accomplish.
Which one?
Instead of the last purchase.
Accomplished.
Can't be accomplished.
Now, but don't include A, B, C, D at this point, because that specifically ties us to a directed plan. Otherwise, the charge is open at this point, that it's just looking at the fact that we have a bunch of aging old buildings, number one, we have code and ADA problems, but we do have, we do have a vision of possibly constructing a new Town Hall on a church property, if we can't get it, it'll be in Stevensfields, and the library, and the old Town Hall, and what's left will be refurbished, or maybe the old police building will be demolished. Okay with that, right?
Yeah, it probably should have been one.
Okay.
It should be going up those back stairs to the attic, though, of the Town Hall.
I also wanted to burn the hobo shed, but I lost that fight, but anyways.
No control burns.
No control burn. And, but, try to keep some of that last part, you know what I mean, about the dates, so it gives them a fact that it's not a sunset committee immediately after the Deliberative Session in March, it continues on. So if you can help me just finish that last part, I think we can vote on the charge, got that middle piece, because it doesn't tie any formal plan that exists at this time, because we haven't formally tied it together.
Are we agreed that we're going to go back and digest this plan and see just exactly what we think it says, and whether we agree with it or don't agree with it?
Yes, but what I'm trying to do at this point is get a charge out, at least we get a committee to be established, and they'll have the basic, what the, what we're trying to do. And then, once we get the details of the plan, then that will be transferred to them.
John, on part two of Part E, where you talked about the warrant article, you've got some real specifics in there, that you've, you've just decided to take the specifics out of above. Do you want to leave all that in there? Because does it reference anything anymore?
Well, that's the question I'm bringing up to Scott, because he wrote that last piece, and I tried to butter it up a little bit.
I'm a little, I, if I were looking at this committee as a potential member, I wouldn't know what that meant.
Well, I'm going to...
Please, go ahead.
I'm suggesting, let's leave it the way it is, and just put a caveat, the plan needs to be totally finalized by us, because we're going to do some kind of plan, we don't know We don't know exactly the details of it that we're gonna agree on, but we're gonna satisfy, or we're gonna present them with some kind of plan. So I propose that we leave in those things that we just talked about, and don't take them out, and just say, "The plan has not been completely finalized."
Still under review?
Yes.
By the select board?
And then when we have it finalized, then we'll give it to them.
Alright, give me a sentence and where-
That's, I go, that's a good idea.
That works. You're not getting away till we finish this, give me a sentence and where.
Well, I think if you leave it the way it is, just put a caveat, like an asterisk next to, "When we reference plan", it just may be something at the bottom that says, "The plan will be finalized by the board and then given to you at a later time" or something like that.
It's under review by the board.
That sounds, yeah.
The plan is under review by-
It's currently under review by the board.
Because eventually, they're gonna get a plan. It might not necessarily be exactly what the Facilities Committee recommended, but it will be planned.
Is this a workable timetable?
Be finalized.
Yeah, well, many of those dates are set in the future.
Very near future.
They'll do what they can do. Are you getting some of that? In I.
Some of it.
That's the amount of time, remember, they start up until the deliberative session, and after deliberative session, they'll have some time to-
So I guess we're saying, it's time to be- Where I took out, it says, "Issues the plan, right? We'll put it after for the plan."
We finalize-
Is that what you think it's planned? Right here it says, what, to be? Issues the plan addresses and the-
I wanna say the plan addresses, right? And then C, desired outcomes of the plan and consequences not addressing.
Financial details of the plan, is that what you want?
Yeah.
Financial details of the plan, yeah. At this, but leave at this stage in there.
Yeah.
Because it could, well, until we review it and bless it, it's subject to change.
Well, yeah, I think if you take at this stage out and put the asterisk next to that plan as well-
Yep.
That works.
Okay.
So what I have, okay, so the first thing, 'cause I'm gonna rewrite this, send it to Julie, but I'm hoping we're gonna vote on it tonight.
Okay.
Alright. It just means that anything else will just be editorial at this point. So it's no longer the campaign committee, every time you see that, it'll be the Town Center Vision Committee.
Yep.
It'll take that out. Then we drop all the way down to, uh, the camp, still the camp, the campaign committee will ensure that the following points are addressed, and we're going down to point number two, instead of purchased, accomplished, right?
Yep.
And then, two A, leave it alone, two B, take out that other word, I had issues, I can't read my own word now, 'cause I crossed it out.
Issues the- The strategy, isn't it a plan?
Now, it's a plan with an asterisk-
Yep.
-next to it, and, and then, addresses and those that it doesn't. Next thing, two C, desired outcomes of the plan with asterisks, and the rest stays. Then financial details of the plan, asterisks, and that remains in the bottom, there'll be a line way in the bottom here with an asterisk, says, "The plan is currently under review by the Board of Selectment and will be finalized in the very near future."
Two D, needs to change your strategy, and at this stage, cross out, and plan with an asterisk next to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, financial details of the plan, asterisks, at this stage, and possible funding. Yeah, there's three plans, three asterisks.
I'm sorry, can I just ask what, what is meant by movement of the Town Center buildings?
Relocation.
So in terms of where the annex is going away, they need to know that, they need to know that the, the freight depot, the historical site is moving next to the town hall, and the hobo shed, tool shed is moving.
Those all are accomplished with the word location.
Yeah, we don't need the location of old town, or location, that's true.
Location and dissemination, because, or, because-
Relocation.
They just have to know-
Annex isn't being relocated, it's being-
Well, I wanna set to this.
It's, yeah, it could be demolished or moved, I do not know.
Right.
We need to-
We look into the recycling center.
Oh, well, there's a contingent of townspeople that want it saved, because it's historical significance. Not that you were in it, but that it was the first part.
You're gonna put a roof on it, soon it's gonna take care of itself.
Yeah, so, and then some people burn the thing down and get the hell out of here, so...
So I'm gonna port this to you, and then you can make sure-
And it's much more clear.
I go with the second rule. Hey, the other thing you could do is you could lift the annex out and sell it, and somebody could buy it for historical purposes. Maybe one of the previous police people that used to work there.
I think fire department.
I know what it was.
One of your, uh, local neighbors is interested in buying it and moving it.
You're kidding me!
And using it, so...
Well, that's true.
But, you know, if the townspeople wanna keep and use it for something else, they've also been talking about moving it down to Little River Park and using it, because it originally was a garage.
Yeah.
The three bays, they filled in the front three bays. Using it as a garage down there. 'Cause also, if we do something to the hobo shed, the tool shed, there's a big generator on a trailer, where do you put it? You could put it in that building down there.
That's true, too.
So...
So, the thought is, I'm gonna make these changes, send it to the town administrator, and she's gonna look it over one more time, make sure it's got the essence of what it is.
Okay.
But I'd like to move that we charge the committee and, and approve the charge, establish the committee and its membership, and approve this charge tonight.
Can I make, down here, we're using the word campaigning, can we get rid of that and use something else?
Where, which, give me a location.
Like EI, uh, two EI?
Two E.
Campaign the public?
I, what you wanna say?
Yeah, and we use campaign down there a few other times, so...
Educate?
So about educate-
Brand work.
The public?
Deliver a session, present it to voters about the vision, something or other, vision strategy, or-
About the vision.
Vision, yeah.
Yeah, the vision.
I think that's just the two places where you use campaign.
And a warrant article to blah blah blah. Continue to provide information to public is under three I?
Four.
Or lead decides the future of the-
The other thing that we didn't really talk about, which I kind of, if you saw it, you must be buying into it, is the idea that they promote this plan for the whole thing, we ask for a warrant article to do the study and do all that stuff, and then come back in.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, so, that was something that I came up with, so I think we should officially, this is something to be known that that's-
No, I, I think that's exactly what my thoughts were. This is, you try to educate as much as possible, get them to buy in, to give us a little bit of money, a preliminary drawing to lay out before you ask for a big chunk of money.
Is it going to be a warrant article to buy the land at the church?
And you have to-
Assuming that the church agrees to sell it.
Is that clear in this? It talks about, you don't mention that there's a, you don't mention that there's a separate warrant article for that up here, just says if the purchase of can't be, I don't know.
Yeah, well, at this point, it's just a charge to that committee.
Okay, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
So-
You could put, just to be clear, you could put in two, it says, "If the purchase, parentheses, separate warrant article of the church, the church congregational", or you do that, maybe, I don't know, I don't, I don't think you really need to.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But the Stevens Fields are already in town, right?
Yeah, we are here, you could-
Sure. Doesn't matter, you could still-
Well, that's the fallback if-
Just the fallback.
If the church won't sell, which they've indicated they're gonna sell, but they might negotiate prices or whatever, um, if something goes off with that, that, that's our backup place to put the new town hall.
And if the voters don't approve the church?
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
What if the voters-
Is that the best?
We don't use it.
You could still-
Is that what everybody says is the best plan to put in on the church property, or why?
Why are you looking at me?
There are- Why, why prefer the church property rather than just Stevens Field? I'm just asking, I'm not-
Because they wanna keep the Town Center buildings together, those particular functions.
And that's in between Stevens Field and the-
And then there's a contingent that'd like to just move it over here and do that? Because there's some synergies to be gained by moving it over here, for instance, if you were to build the town hall on the Stevens Field, you're gonna create a parking lot. One of the things this building has a problem with is parking. So if you had an event here, overflow over there.
Right.
If you had an event over there, overflow over here.
That's why I was-
So those two work together.
Why wouldn't it be all great having it all together right here?
Plus, you already own Stevens Field.
Yep.
I know, that's why I'm wondering why all this about the church. Really, I mean, is that really the best option? I'm kind of questioning at this point.
My feeling as a selector, I'd like to expand the town, as Brian was just saying, you look fifty years down the road, even if we don't put the town hall there, we, we have this property for expansion.
Yeah.
I wanted to buy the property where the building is next door to town hall, I'd push that, and it just, the town wouldn't go at the time. I wanted to buy it, put a disabled on it, sit on it for future expansion, but we just couldn't go that direction.
I don't know the church is gonna be, and I may be speaking out of turn for them, but I'm pretty active there.
Yeah.
I don't think they're gonna be ready to be, they've gotta go to a congregational meeting, if the recommendation is to sell it, and the congregation's gonna have to, I don't think it's gonna be ready for a warrant article.
It might not be.
That's, I don't think they can do it that-
That's why this contingency is, if we don't get this, we have this other-
I'm not so sure.
As a towns person, we say, why buy it? When you already own it. Yeah, I, that's a very valid point.
Your, uh, leadership is gone, and they should've had an assessment done by the end of last month, and they're gonna be meeting, and if they agree with that assessment, they'll most likely put it to the membership. They have to give you a two-week notice, and then you have to go.
Well, you know, unlike all the-
That meeting is taking place with the leadership.
So, I, I have a question, though, as to the next step. Will, will the board then want to make decisions, discussions about reaching out to potential members of the committee at Monday night's meeting?
That's a week and a half, right? I thought-
Oh, it is a week and a half?
Yes. I thought that we were going to do this charge, give it to, um, Deb, and then she